Uh, we're, I guess, we're afraid some. Big seventy five.
All right.
I'd like to.
Uh, all over the world.
No, no.
You pretty much.
Oh, no, I'm. About twenty-five percent of my time in Utah.
And on a big project in Seattle.
We ready to go ahead and start? Noah Royce, we ready?
Arizona's.
We ready to start? Okay.
Yes, we're good.
Yes.
Always play the players.
Well, thank you. Welcome everybody to Plan Commission meeting. We'll go ahead and get started tonight. Call ahead and call the meeting to order. And we have our invocation of thought by Commissioner Dennis Johnson and then pledge allegiance by Commissioner Hunter. We'll go to that point.
Our Father in heaven, we grateful for the opportunity we have to assemble this evening and discuss the needs and wants of the city. We're grateful for the opportunity of living in this wonderful city and for those who guide and direct us, we pray that those decisions that are made tonight will be the best for the community and we appreciate the input of the citizens that we might evaluate and use wisdom and judgment and doing the things that would be best for this community. Pray for guidance and direction in all that we do and we do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I would like to be nations who rely on the United States of America and to give a reprieve for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is to adopt tonight's meeting agenda. It has been posted in accordance with state law, so we can take a motion to adopt tonight's agenda. Oh, yes.
Uh, just quickly, um, there, there was a clerical mistake on item number seven. Uh, it's not going to be a public hearing. We already held that public hearing. It is simply just a site plan. Um, we're going to look at from the table to item before.
So if we can make that note in them and uh, motion that number seven is just a site plan review, no public hearing.
Uh, so move with the, with said adjustment with, uh, the change to number seven not being a public here.
A motion by Commissioner King, we have a second.
Second.
Like Commissioner Hunter, all in favor?
I think.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Next item is our meeting minutes, adoption of our meeting minutes from our last meeting on May twenty first. Uh, if there's any comments or corrections, otherwise take a motion to adopt.
Didn't see any corrections or any changes on.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Garner. Second. Mr. John, Dallas Johnson, all in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Next item on our agenda is a public comment period. And this is an opportunity for the public to comment and make comments and let, share ideas or information with the planning commission on items that are not on tonight's agenda. We do have a couple of, a few public hearings on tonight's agenda, so if you are here for one of those, please wait until that item comes up. Um, if you have someone, if someone else has a comment they'd like to make I regard issue not on tonight's agenda, please come up to the podium this time, state your name, address, and try and keep your contract about three minutes, please.
Hello.
Oh.
My name is Bob Lamb. I live at five eighty-two S twenty-five, uh, twenty-five South. Um, I just had a question. Um, the, it's about the, uh, secondary water. Um, the Weaver Basin Water Conservancy District, uh, was scheduled to have the water open from, uh, April fifteenth till October fifteenth. I've seen that Syracuse, they, they, they started May first and they're scheduled to close it at October fifth, October first. And if the, uh, Weber Basin Water Conservancy District is going to keep the secondary water on until October fifteenth of this year, as planned, uh, why wouldn't Syracuse do the same?
That's actually something not in the purview of the planning commission. It's a public works question.
Public works, okay, wrong place.
Uh, yeah, wrong place. We, I don't, we couldn't help you with that one, but Public Works would be the right people. If you want to talk to staff, they could probably give you the name of someone of who you could talk to in Public Works, though.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Okay, go ahead and close public hearing. Um, next item on the agenda is a public hearing for warrants amendment, worse regarding the street tree regulations. I guess that you know, all right?
Yes, good evening, council. Uh, we've previously talked about this a few times. Last time, uh, you requested that the the, uh, common name be added to the list and there you go. Uh, common name is now added, uh, but as a recap for those that uh, weren't here, where we, we've been reviewing the lists, we went to J and J Nursery, consulted with them and said, are these available? We went down all of them. And then we removed some of them from the last list, added a few that are good. Um, we, we do, we used to have some trees that just did not do good in Syracuse with the alkaline soil and clay soil. In particular, like red maples or silver maples, sugar maples, those all do not like the soil out here. So we removed those, uh, from the list. Um, the other change, uh, we had already discussed is the spacing. Um, and this is consistent with other cities that we've researched. For a small tree, it used to say thirty, where we'd be proposing to move it. You can be twenty feet apart, uh, medium trees could be thirty and large trees can be forty. Um, if you look at the common diameter of those trees that are on the small tree, medium tree, large tree list, that would still not pose a, a problem. Um, and that might encourage more street trees. Um, it's a delicate balance. We want street trees. We think that they make the city better. They improve property values. They make traffic slower on roads. They provide, uh, safety for pedestrians. Uh, but they can also cause havoc with sidewalks and curb and gutter and create tripping hazards and all that stuff. And so uh, we do have already in the ordinance, a lot of precautions and spacing requirements and things from utilities. One thing that we did, uh, kind of toyed around with what the wording would, would be, uh, but we, but I just settled on this simple. Um, in every park strip, there is a gas line. And so even in the larger park strips, um, it would basically make it, you know, if, if we didn't categorize or clarify, because if tech, if you have a technical reading of this where it says, no one may plant street trees other than those species listed as small trees under or within ten lateral feet of overhead utility or within five lateral feet of any underground water line, sewer line, transmission line or other utility. Technically, that other, other utility would include a gas line, which even if you have a ten foot wide park strip and the gas line is going right down in the middle of it, you still couldn't park. It would just basically make it so you couldn't plant any big tree, even in a big park strip. So if we say excluding gas, that just clarifies that you can actually plant a street tree over a gas line. They're not, gas lines are, are, uh, uh, not something that trees see the roots that necessarily seek out there. It's not considered like a wet utility like a sewer line or water line or anything like that. If a tree does get, if a, if a line is buried shallow and a tree gets really big, it can bend the line. And those lines do bend. I think it's a, um, what are the yellow poly pipes? Uh, they can bend. Uh, but if the tree root does get too big, there's still, I guess there's risk with everything. Like we say, we're trying to find a balance to provide trees, but also have some regulations to avoid some problems. So those are the, those are the proposed changes that we'd be forwarding to city council. They're all changes that we had previously discussed. Uh, if you have any questions, let me know, or if you want to make any additional changes, we can. There's nothing really driving this. We're not in a hurry to, to get it through, so we just want to get right.
Okay, thank you. This is scheduled for public hearing tonight, so we'll go ahead and open public hearing. Uh, if you have one to make a comment on this particular item on the ordinance for the shade trees, please come to the podium, state your name and address, make your comment, hold your comments about three minutes, please. Okay, go ahead and close public hearing. For the commission then for discussion or motion, and we have talked about this a couple of times before, so.
I think this meets everything that we have been talking about requesting. Unless somebody has something that we did talk about, we did. And that we, that's not about the hearing. I think we're good.
Uh, the only comment I have is I, I think also transmission lines should be added to the exclusion list because they're in the same or they should be in the same poly pipe as the gas. Same exact material. And I don't know that that's for sure. I know Utopia is all in HDP poly conduit, so.
Yeah, generally speaking, we, they haven't been in the way because for the most part they ran either right along the back of the sidewalk or right along the front of the sidewalk, not right through the middle of the park strip. But yeah, we could cross that out if you guys wanted to.
Just a thought, because this, I know that in my yard, that would prevent me from planting trees in my park strip.
I think I'm fine with moving that to the exceptions list. If the rest of the commission is good with that. Okay, so when we make the motion, make sure to include that in the, in the motion. And this is a, is a recommendation to council.
I can make a motion. There's more, no more comments. I move that we recommend to the city council approval of the ordinance amendment with the exception of adding transmission line to the exclusion list. In item F.
Thank you, Commissioner Hunter, we have a second. Commissioner Johnson, all in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes, thank you. Next item is a subdivision amendment. Um, requested by Robert Roger Larkin. Um, for amendment to a Syracuse metal subdivision. Royce or Noah, which one of you has got this one? Or your tag teammate?
I realized after we sent out the packet that we're going to be just playing musical chairs all night, but, um, so this is a supply amendment. Um, this, we, we did a rezone of this one recently, uh, back last month. It was approved, so we would have seen that, I believe, I believe we saw it in March or April, um, but the the property is on the corner of twenty-four hundred west and twenty-seven hundred south, so the, it's currently uh, large enough to rezone per the, the zone that it was moved into, the R three zone. So essentially it's just splitting this lot in half, so the plat, zoom out here. So north being to the left on this plat. Um, yeah, so a new lot there on the south side, nothing will change with the north side. Um, the, the new lot will also encompass this bridle path easement, which if you look at the the aerial image, you can kind of see the, the fence there. Currently, there's a bridle path that's used for this subdivision and the new subdivision to the south. Um, as partially as access to the rodeo grounds, or not the rodeo grounds, the riding arena, I should say, um. But yeah, everything, uh, that's shown here meets all the requirements of the code and, uh, given the property has been officially rezoned, everything is legal and good to go, so we would recommend approval of this item.
Okay, thank you. This is scheduled for public hearing tonight. So if, uh, we'll go ahead and open public hearing, same rules like I just explained at the last public hearing. Okay, go ahead and close the public hearing. And to the commission. There's questions or we can take a motion.
Well, before the motion, who's Mr. Larkin here?
I'm just, so he could.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I move the planning commission approve the request of Roger Larkin for a subdivision plat amendment called Syracuse Metal Subdivision Plat A. First amended on property located at twenty-four nineteen west, twenty-seven hundred south in the R three zone.
Okay, a motion, a second?
Second.
Okay, my commissioner, all in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Any motion passes, thank you. Next item is a public hearing for a site plan. This is for a JAGS gas station.
All right, so, uh, similar thing here, another administrative approval, uh, this was reviewed by the Architecture Review Committee, uh, on June third. We talked about, uh, pretty in depth, actually, with this one. Uh, those meetings were always, are is, uh, fairly, fairly in depth, but this one really got a lot of reviews, so um, they didn't generate any comments, but, uh, we did have a lot of good discussion about the specifics of the, the property. So it's a corner of three thousand west and antelope here. Um, let me zoom out a bit. Oh, actually, yeah. So uh, the site plan composes the build, the building here, they got some parking and then this gas canopy. Um, we went through a lot of review on the building and, uh, not as much on the gas canopy until recently, so what's shown in the packet has, has been updated for the, the drawings of the gas canopy specifically. Um, what's included was, uh, the, um, columns, including, uh, masonry is the same. The only difference is here, uh, the original drawing shows a lot more blue on the exterior and also they didn't have these notches here, these two foot notches to break up the facade. So those notches have been included and the blue has been reduced, which brings it into compliance with the ordinance, so um, that's, that's something that we've been working out, uh, over the weekend, trying to make sure we had everything taken care of for this meeting, so um, everything meets the ordinance, uh, let's see, I guess in terms of.
What are the three green squares just above the building?
The three green squares, those are like patio tables. There's a little
Okay.
kind of patio area out here, um. Actually, as part of the review process, that was originally on the south side of the building and wanted to move the building south closer to the street, so I ended up moving those up, which had a couple of added benefits of getting away from the noise of the street and also getting some shade potentially, depending on the time of year. Um, we do anticipate, you know, traffic coming up from this direction, foot traffic, I mean, so there's a sidewalk here going directly into the store. Um, let me take a, take a look at the elevations real quick. There we go. So as you can see here, zoom in a bit. Uh, this, this is compliant with the overall subdivision theme, uh, for those of you that recall the medical building that was approved and also the Mr. Cardwash, this is a similar, so this white brick, white stucco, and then this, uh, metal siding that kind of has a wood type color to it with the dark brick and then the glass. Um, so what's proposed here? Um, it's unique for the area in a way, but it's also, uh, compliant with what's been approved in this subdivision, so um, yeah, pretty straightforward. I guess the gas station is, is, is a gas station, but, uh, should look nice, um. But yeah, based on that, we recommend approval, um, as everything's been addressed and there weren't any ARC comments to be addressed.
Right, so would you mind going back to page thirty-nine?
Thirty, thirty-nine?
Yeah. Sorry, no, keep going up a little bit more, sorry, right there.
Right here.
Oh, yeah, so, yeah, I was just confirming that what I've seen earlier, that it's, it only has the access from the north.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. So this is all internal access only. This is an internal access road that heads, uh, west and will connect down to seventeen hundred again.
Awesome, thank you.
Do you have any other questions for the commission?
Uh, did have a question as far as, uh, the bike parking. I didn't see any where on there. And then also just circulation of pedestrians within the rest of the unit, how is that gonna, because it just looks like it's asphalt, doesn't?
Yeah, so that is a good question. So actually, um, so there is no bike parking included. That does need to be shown in some, some capacity, probably. I would think in this area. Um, that is a good point, and that is, that is my mistake. I'm working with an older version of the code, I'm just realizing. Um, the pedestrian circulation, so we originally didn't have this access here and the circulation was to come up across here. That's not ideal with these, these conflict points. Um, so that's why this access was added to the south to direct people this way. So in terms of the pedestrian access, this is, this is going to be your primary access. This is going to be access more to the rest of the, the future development. There's, there are some empty lots here that are undeveloped. That will eventually be some sort of commercial use and there will need to be pedestrian access on that side.
I have some questions, but I'll ask them after the.
Uh, is there a, a change in, is there a crosswalk marking or any way to indicate that there, there would be expected pedestrian activity there, other stamped concrete or, you know, two-tone or something that would be.
Paint strips.
Yep.
Hopefully long, better longevity than paint.
I'm not sure why I'm not seeing that. Okay, that, and that does need to be included, you're correct. Yep, so just between here and here. Need to have some sort of indication. Okay, and were there other questions from the commission?
Well, it's also scheduled for public hearing. I have a question, I'll wait till after the public hearing.
Okay.
Let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Uh, this is public hearing for this item on, that we've been talking about, this, uh, convenient grocery gas station and convenience store. Can't talk tonight. Um, so if anyone has a comment on, on this particular item, please come to the podium, state your name and address, make your comment and, uh,
Hello, Shane Croton, twenty-three fifty-three, south thirty-five eighty-five west. Um, there was just one item I was curious on when I was looking at the, the site plan. It appears that there's an, an air machine on the north side of the building, just at the end of the stalls. And I was just curious if that's the actual location that they're planning to do. That, you know, if, if I wanted to pull a trailer in to fill up my tires, that might be a difficult location for that, but it's the only comment I had.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment. So back to the commission. I, I believe we also have, um, we, it actually, Mike, are you the applicant or you could have something else? I wasn't sure. Do we have the applicant here tonight? Mike, okay. If we have questions, we've got the applicant here also, it looks like, so.
I think my question is probably more for staff.
Okay.
Up. It's with the driveway, so right now, they, there's a new uh, ramp that's, the con- concrete is securing now. There's like a telephone pole in the middle of that. Is there, is there plans for that to be removed?
In terms of, oh, out, out on three thousand west here? Yeah, so the.
Right.
Got that red spot?
It's a little bit south of that, of that one, or is that, that's the hydrant, so just, and it's right within the the transition between the road and the sidewalk, so it's when the sidewalk guys formed the sidewalk, they just blocked out the telephone pole and there's a big square empty with a hole coming through, and so I wondered if that was intended to be removed? Because that's that, that's a problem.
Yeah, let me pull up the subdivision plot.
Actually, if it's, it's on page, let's go to pages. If you go up.
Sorry, Commissioner, are you, are you talking about on, on the access from three thousand up here or are you talking about on this site?
No. There's also, there's also one on the sidewalk in front of the building.
Okay.
I guess it's in the landscapes we find there.
So right about where that arrow points, that says only, the right turn only. That's where a telephone pole is.
Talking about.
Let me see if I can find the. Listen.
So, I mean, it's on, it's on Google Maps, but it, you can't, I mean, you can't see the new ramp because it's not there yet, but I don't know, is that? I don't know if the applicant knows anything about.
Why don't you, why don't you come up so they can?
Sorry, may I chime in? This is, this is Heather, I'm on the Zoom call.
I'm Sam Brady, Sam Brady Architects. We understand that that light pole's been moved. Then it's gone.
Oh.
Uh, I drove past on my way here tonight and it is still.
Maybe. We got any survey drawings there. Let me, if we missed it, if they've got it on their survey and they don't have it shown, it should be shown on our survey drawing. Does it show the pole on there?
Yeah, on the preliminary plot drawings, we, it shows the power pole to be relocated.
Okay, yep, that's exactly where it is.
Okay, so noted. Does that answer that question?
Yeah, yeah, that's I thought that would be the case. I just wanted to, to make sure that that was the point.
Okay.
Any other questions? Which mission?
Do we, uh, I, I want to kind of address Shane's point, um, regarding the air the air refill. I agree with that location being i- i- that is the location of the tire filling look, uh, station, right?
Yeah.
It, I, I kind of would agree with Shane's comment. You know, a lot of people will be pulling their trailers through and that's a lot easier to do when it's along the longer strip of where they can pull in, but I mean, where is it again? Uh,
Right up here at the patio.
Based on the drawing right next to the patio area.
You see the striped out? Well, you will in a minute.
Yeah.
We go to the architectural site plan, it shows some shading for different parking elements there. It's just to the left of the blue area. The blue area is designated as the place to fill your tires.
Yeah.
And we, you know, we can we move it wherever they, you guys want it, or the planning, uh, planning and zoning on it.
Yeah, I think it'd be better for your customers if they just had it easier.
Yeah, we've had them, there's different sites, different stores throughout the whole nation that don't have today's maybe ideas of trailers and you know, those kind of things in place and there, I've been in, over in K'sville and such, and you can hardly get to the, to the air pump.
And to be perfectly honest, I wouldn't have even thought of it until it was already built in, it was already put in and I came in to fill up my, one of the tires on my trailer and I'm like, well, that's a, can be it.
Yeah, that would be accommodating. That'd be sure. We could coordinate, do you want to have, uh, uh, Royce or no, we could coordinate with them or do you want to designate something tonight? And get your best shot at it, throw a dart?
I'm sure it's all up to tell you where to do it.
I would just, just coordinate with them and figure out where the best place would be for your customer, future customers there and.
To the point of this conversation, as long as it's approvable to move it somewhere along three thousand, is that a versus, you know, taking it over on six, seventeen hundred?
I would ask that of staff.
I think seventeen hu- or three thousand would be somewhere along that zone. It's out of the way of the, there's not, there's more room there, parallel with the pumps.
Absolutely. Royce and Noah, is there any problem with our ordinance to have it along that edge?
No, no, our, our ordinance wouldn't address that at all.
Okay.
I, I agree. I think on three thousand west probably makes the most sense, maybe right by the light pole or something like that.
Yeah, we'd probably put it near that for a lot of reasons and, and it's more central, so if you come in directionally, if you're turning around to get to it or leaving or entering the space, you can bring your center your trailer on it, as noted that they've talked about. So we'll anticipate that we'll put it probably near center, near that light pole.
And then Scott's other, um, recommendation about the crosswalk markers, um, is that something that we can have?
That would be right in there, just. You have.
There's. Is that, is that on the?
That would be a city ordinance thing, so that's, that would be required, yep.
Okay.
Okay.
So if I understand correctly, commission, so, uh, we have this, the air pump thing, I, that's not really an ordinance thing. Uh, the bike parking, bec- given the number of stalls they have, they do have to have one bike parking space, which I feel like could probably be pretty easily accommodated to the north of the building here. I can work with the applicant on that if you'd like. Uh, and then the striping.
Yeah, the striping along whatever the new road up there, the top of the pages.
Right. Would that need to be incorporated into our, into our, uh, motion?
Probably a good thing to include.
Or just follow your recommendation.
It's really up to the commission. If you'd like to include those three specific things, you can. If you'd like to say work with staff to address issues, that's fine. Um, I'd, I'd like specifics in the motion though personally.
I would do that, though.
Do you have any further questions for the applicant or for staff?
Um, overall, really good design, I mean, it's good. I, I think we want this project. I mean, don't, don't make us scurried, so.
Sure.
I like the building. But I like the building design that you guys.
Thanks. Our goal was to try and make it not look like a gas station, but more of a customer retail type.
Be honest, it, it, it reminds me of the gas station that's, as you're leaving lagoon, you're coming right off of that. To be honest, it, it, it reminds me of the gas station that's, as you're leaving lagoon, you're coming right off of that pass and getting onto that highway right there.
Our favorite Chevron in Farmington?
Yeah. That's what I thought of when I saw the, when I saw the picture. So.
And their air pump is over near that corner edge by the propane. By the way, no, it's actually out by the corner to watch you leave lagoon. So.
There you go.
Sorry.
Yeah, this is, this is my neighborhood. So this is like, will be the closest gas station for me. So. I'm happy to be.
Actually, this is, this is going to replace my Maverick trips.
It does. I'll agree. It does look like a nice design and then we do welcome you into the city with, I think this will be a, a good spot for a gas station and it looks nice. So we have a motion.
Could I, sorry, could I? Could we dread Noah and Royce? Could we talk about a couple of items that we've submitted or? While we've got you here captive.
Sure.
We were wanting to show you the. Have you shown them the, um. Canopy design a little bit for a moment? Is that going to, we just want to reiterate that that is going to be approvable. It meets the, did we already discuss Royce, the conversation to Noah that we're fine with this?
You, you mentioned that you, that they went through, that it meets the code.
Okay. Yeah, there was some back and forth and they've been great to work with and. Uh, if we, we have some history with our ordinances with gas stations and. Some of it has just been maybe back and forth with staff. And by the time against the planning commission, you don't know the story, but. Our, our ordinance, uh, says that if you have a roof line longer than fifty feet. It has to be broken up and that's usually a problem for gas canopies because they're just as long. And so they've been good to work with us and. You know, they, it has, if you look at the fine details and we don't need to get all the way into that with you guys unless you want to, but. They've, they've provided a break in, in this, uh. Facia, upper facia, and I think it will, that'll meet the ordinance. And then the ordinance also says that. Colors should be context sensitive and Chevron, that Chevron blue is a pretty bright. Abr- not abrasive, but it's, it's a bright blue on purpose. That's their brand, right? And we want them. To have the brand that they need to be successful, but we also want it to be contextually appropriate. And so. We've arrived, uh, there, there's some back and forth. Original one was just the whole thing was just blue everywhere. And we said, hey, we think that maybe is too much. And they've been good to go back and forth and we've landed on this iteration is the one that we feel that meets the ordinance. So that's the, I don't know. Did you want to add anything else besides?
Take a note of the signage, that flag sign on the outside. That's pretty much a requirement needed to make sure you know what gas price is to pull in and do it. Want to make sure that even though signage can be a separate permissible element, Royce and Noah, we want to make sure that that is approvable too. So we can. Bring all of these elements into this package. So we don't have to, you know, go back and forth so that we can get a overall approval from. This project for signage, you know, we'll get that coordinated through Noah and Royce.
I think in this case, the signage goes along with the site plan. So.
Yeah.
Pardon? In this case, the sign goes along with the site plan. So if we approve the site plan tonight, then.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that that doesn't have to come back in front of you and say, oh, where's the sign and what does it look like and so.
Do we know where the sign will?
Yeah, it's right on the corner where the pumps or the air pump might have been. In Farmington. Do you see it on there? Do you want to show them Royce or Noah where it's located? It's on kind of hugging towards Antelope. So when you come down westbound or eastbound, you'll see the sign.
Right there in the corner.
Yeah, it's, it's right in that area. That's probably not the best drawing to show it, but, uh. You see it right there in the green. That's that sign right there. So I think it's in the really good spot. It's outside just noteworthy, the clear view. So it's not in the way of. People turning the corner, right? Noah and Royce to stay out of that by, by design.
That's great. Thank you. Most of, most of Western engineers release and stuff.
Okay.
Appreciate that. Any other questions for the applicant or for staff?
I'll make a motion.
Please.
Okay. And I'm going to include the, this is for approval of the site plan. It's not a recommendation. Correct?
Correct.
That's what I thought. All right. Uh, Mr. Chair, I move that the planning commission. Approve the application of the site plan for Sam. From Sam Brady for JAG's gas station site plan at sixteen sixty-two South three thousand west comprising one point two four acres in the general commercial zone. With the, um. Uh, amendments of relocation of the air machine, uh, to confirm that the crosswalk markers will be clearly. Uh, marked and that the bicycle park or parking as per ordinance for our city ordinances.
Thank you, Commissioner King. We're second. I'll second that. Commissioner Hunter, all in favor? Any post? Okay, motion passes. Next item on the agenda is. And this is, was, is one of the changes. No, it's not a public hearing, but it's for a site plan approval. Uh, for a site, a proposed commercial site in neighborhood services zone.
Okay, so, um, the last time we saw this one, there were some concerns about the materials, uh, and it was continued. So we've worked with the applicant and they've been great. Uh, just wanted to make sure that we had everything cleared up. So what they did is, uh, we went back and forth a bit about the, the metal siding. Um, let me zoom out here. So the solution was originally to change and put this fiber cement board on the, uh, the front of the building and leave the back with the metal paneling. Still had some back and forth there. So they decided to, to leave the roofing as the metal. Um, and then the side here is going to be this fiber cement board as well. So the, the entire facade. Uh, with the exception of the concrete and the glasses is fiber cement board. So. With that chain.
Now meets the code, right?
It does. Yep. Everything meets code with flying colors. So, uh, yeah, based on that, we would recommend approval.
I remember this.
Yeah.
This was the one that was questioning whether or not it met code.
Yep. And that was why we tabled before is that we were concerned it did not meet the code. So. Uh, discussion with the commission, there's no public hearing on this. So it's just, just a mission. This was what we tabled it for.
Yep.
Yep. So I, I'm fine with it. It was the changes.
It looks good.
I think Jeremy's done a great job of. Yeah. You know, meeting what we've asked.
I think Jeremy's done everything we asked him to do.
Yep, I agree. So take a motion or we can have more discussion on it. If there's more questions.
I have one item to note. I guess if you want to, if you can go to one, page one twenty-two. Is that part of our, it's just notes from the. Applicant. If you go to the beginning of this, so actually probably earlier, a couple of pages earlier, it's the beginning of this review. Is this the same section right there? That just says a review of the Syracuse Medical Office Building? I just want to make that note that this.
Yep. Yep, I will. I will make sure that's noted.
Is that something that needs to be in the motion to correct or is that just?
No, that's, that's just my in-house review. I was using a review from a previous project, forgot to change the name on.
I've never done that.
But attention to detail. That's great.
Okay. So with, with that note, is there any other, uh, comments or take a motion on this item?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve the site plan. Request by Jeremy Bingham for the proposed commercial site plan at fourteen seventy-two West three hundred South. Comprising point nine two six acres in the neighborhood services zone.
Thank you. A motion or second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Any, any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay, next item is our bylaws update. The discussion emotion on this is one we've been talking about for the last couple of meetings.
We have been diligent in reviewing the bylaws. Nothing has changed. We're just making it official. Since last time we talked about it, I think it was just in a work meeting. So yeah, uh, currently it says you have to have four members of the commission. To transact any business before the planning commission. So we're proposing to change that to say. Four members of the commission shall be required to approve or deny an item. An item may be tabled with less than four votes, only if the majority of the members present agree. So if people are just really digging in their heels, you're going to avoid a meeting that lasts forever.
Or till nine o'clock. Since that's the part of the bylaws that we had. Okay. Well, this is, um, is this that small change? Um, you have discussion or we can take a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Sorry. Mr. Chair, I move that, this is recommended for city council, correct?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I move the recommendation to approve the proposed changes, uh, for the amendment to planning commission bylaws concerning voting procedures.
Second, all in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Next item is a motion or is adjourned into work session?
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
I.
Yeah, we are now work session. Um, department business. So, uh, Councilman Watson, have anything for us?
I just got one really quick update.
I think I might've mentioned this prior, but, uh, there's a request for a, uh, zone change for the commercial property across from Walmart on Antelope Drive. Um, we denied that request simply because we didn't have enough information about what was going in there. So. Um, I'm sure it will rezone to commercial at one point, but not right now. So.
When we have.
Thank you.
More specific.
We have more.
Yeah.
What's going in there? Yeah.
Yeah. So that's it.
Thank you.
And was there, have they come forth with like a? Development agreement at all? Is that the next?
No, I, the, 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 the current owner who. Had put in the, the request for the zone change, he put in a really basic mock-up of something. And we were going to, and we had tabled it, uh, at one point to discuss a development agreement. Um, but I think he's in the process of trying to sell it. So. No further discussions on that right now. All right. Thank you.
Um, so your attorney Winchester, do we have anything?
Thank you, but no, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, upcoming agenda items.
All right. So our first meeting in July on the second is canceled. So our next meeting is going to be on the sixteenth. So we, let's see, we have an expansion for Pacific Steel. We're planning on looking at, uh. There's a project on the corner of Banbury and Antelope for townhomes that we may be looking at at that point.
That be a site plan?
Uh, it would be, well, yeah, it's like a site plan preliminary plat sort of thing. It's a PRD, uh, development. So. A little bit more in-depth.
You guys may remember it, for a lot of you, it was probably before your time on planning commission. It was approved by the city and then interest rates went weird. And so the project was delayed. So he still has zoning approval, but since, um, preliminary plats are only valid for one year. His preliminary plat expired and so he had to go through and. He actually had to revamp a few things since we had been tweaking the parking and the driveway stuff. And so. He had, he, he's now ready to. Uh, hopefully get reapproval of his preliminary plat. But the project's already approved. So when it comes to us, it's a matter of, you know, does it meet our ordinances, not should it exist? Or should it not exist? You know, so just heads up on that one.
Cool. I was wondering about that because.
Yes, our last item is, uh, just a rezone from R one to R three, just north of seventeen hundred south on, uh, twenty-five hundred west. And that's it.
Did we, do we have a note for, I know this is quite a few months in advance, but we have a note for the November fifth meeting being canceled.
Why is it November fifth meeting can cancel?
It's election day.
Uh, we haven't canceled in the past because it's with the mail-in stuff. It's not like you go. In the past, we haven't canceled that. Well, since they went to mail-in ballots, we haven't canceled that meeting. But if that's.
I don't think it was on the annual schedule of canceled meetings, but we could discuss, we wanted to cancel that.
Uh, I, we don't necessarily have to do it today, but I want to have that discussion.
Okay, may as we get closer.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll take a look at that one. Um, but that's, that's all we have as far as upcoming agenda items.
Um, anything else we have? Next item is upcoming, there is commissioner report. So I think the commission report. Okay, take a motion to adjourn then.
Move to adjourned.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I guess we'll see everybody a month then it seems like. Thanks, everybody.
Have a joy heritage days.
Thank you.
You too.